Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Village of Bartlett Board Meeting, January 7th, 2014. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Aaronz?
Here.
Camer?
Here.
Carbonaro?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
Shipman?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, welcome, everybody, to a brand-new year. First item on the agenda here is the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will not be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the board members so request, in which event the item will be removed in general order of business and considered an appropriate point on the agenda. At this point, I'd entertain a -- does anybody have anything they want to add to the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. If I could, I'd like to add D1 to the consent agenda.
All right. Trustee Carbonaro is requesting to add D1 to the consent agenda. Anything else? Anything need to be removed? All right, I entertain a motion to amend the consent agenda, including the minutes, the bills list, and item D1, the Grand Control Ordinance Amendment.
They'll move.
Second.
Moved by trustee Shipman, seconded by trustee Martin. The clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Aaronz?
Yes.
Camer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving along, I see next -- oh yeah, we need a motion to approve the amended consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Shipman, seconded by trustee Ranky. The clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Aaronz?
T L.
Trustee Aaronz?
Yes.
Camer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now, moving along to the treasurer's report, I see none. Next item on the agenda is the president's report, which we have some reappointments. There are three members of the Bartlett Plan Commission whose terms expired in 2013. The term of Diane Nagel expired on April 19th, 2013. The terms of members Tom Koontz and chairman Ray Daney expired on December 4th, 2013. I'd like to reappoint all three of them to the Plan Commission, and therefore reappoint Diane Nagel to the Bartlett Plan Commission for a four-year term, retroactive to the date of her term, expired on April 19th, 2013, and ending April 19th, 2017. And reappoint Tom Koontz for a four-year term, retroactive to the date his term expired on December 4th, 2013, and ending December 4th, 2017. And reappoint Ray Daney as chairman of the Plan Commission for a four-year term, retroactive to the date of his term expiration on December 4th, 2013, and ending December 4th, 2017.
The Bartlett Municipal Code requires that appointments to the Bartlett Plan Commission are made by the village president for four-year terms, as stated by the village president, and require it's subject to confirmation by the Board of Trustees, so there needs to be a motion to confirm and consent to the reappointments. Add a second to that motion.
I'd make that motion. Think you need to read that. I move to confirm and consent to the reappointments of Diane Nagel, Tom Koontz, and Ray Daney to the Bartlett Plan Commission for the four-year terms, as stated by the village president, and the reappointment of Ray Daney as chairman of the Plan Commission for said term.
I, trustee Martin, second the motion.
That motion carries, and Diane Nagel, Tom Koontz, and Ray Daney are reappointed. I guess we should vote.
Yes.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Trustee Aaronz?
Yes.
T L, are you having a hard time hearing?
Oh, she said yes?
Yes.
Okay. Camer?
Can't hear me?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Now, that motion carries. And Diane Nagel, Tom Koontz, and Ray Daney are reappointed to Plan Commission for four-year terms, with Ms. Nagel's term beginning retroactive to April 19th, 2013, and beginning April 19th, 2017. Mr. Koontz and Mr. Daney's terms begin retroactive to December 4th, 2013, and expiring December 4th, 2017, with Mr. Daney continuing to serve as chairman of the Plan Commission. Next item on the agenda is question and answers. Is there anyone on the board that has any questions at this point?
Just if I can dovetail on that real quickly, I think it's great that we're reappointing these people. I think sometimes it's easy for us to forget when we sit here that the people who sit in these very chairs, when we're not here, do a lot of the legwork for us, people on the Planning Commission. We're going to talk more about, obviously, the Economic Development Commission tonight and stuff, so kudos to you, Mayor, for making those appointments, and kudos to the people for accepting those appointments, too. It's a lot of kind of hard work that is sometimes certainly not very glorious and sometimes seemingly not appreciated, but since they sit in our very chairs here, sometimes I would say thank you, though.
Absolutely. Agreed. Is there any other questions or comments at this time? One question I did have, a little off the course, but in the notes that the golf course had 17 hole-in-ones at Bartlett Hills this year?
That's correct. We've had two years ago, we had 16 last year and 17 this year, most of the majority were around five to 11, and then 18 this next, and I don't think we had any other registered ones.
Just a little humorous sidebar for the beginning of the year. Is there anything that we do for those people that get the hole-in-ones?
Well, we get all their name and information sent to the PGA Premier Resort Golf Association. We get it in the golf, or in the golf newspapers, and we put it in the exam.
Good.
Is there anything we can use in marketing?
Yeah, like a wall of fame or something, or a couple of pounds?
I mean, we have holes-in-one than any other course or something.
Well, it's all the ones that we have.
Do you require that they buy a round when they get into? Is that part of the deal?
They usually back out quickly if there's a lot of people there.
One other thing I noticed that hasn't shown up on an agenda, doesn't have anything to do with the golf course, and maybe staff could give me some information on this, is that the ongoing quiet zone that we had the money for, I noticed, was finally killed. Is that going to appear at some point down the road in another committee meeting?
It is not entirely dead yet. We have been working with Metro and all those different transportation groups to see if it was feasible to put a quiet zone in in that area. That area is very difficult. It's a number of different railroads, a number of different streets, all coming together at once, some driveways that would be blocked. And in talking to Don Orsino, who's the executive director of Metro, has actually been very helpful on this, and I had indicated that we either needed to fish or cut bait on this because we had other use for the million dollars from CN, and it looks like they have come to the conclusion that it's really not feasible, which puts us in a position, as soon as we conclude that and you conclude that, to move on to Plan B, which is to, you know, look at the quiet zone on Sterns Road, which you've had some requests for. It's much easier to do, much more inexpensive, and some other noise attenuation projects. So I just didn't want to let this hang out too long because there is a timeframe on the money from the CN, so I think that Metro is being now pretty cooperative about helping us come to a conclusion.
Thank you. I just noticed that, and I thought at one point we were discussing that. That's unfortunate, but I think they said it was impossible there, right? I mean, technically impossible.
Yeah, I think that's the word they used, and so we kind of took a hint from that.
Wow, I didn't think anything was possible. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions and answers at this point? Move us on to the town hall portion of the meeting. This is a portion of the meeting where anybody in the audience who wishes to address the board can do so at this time. Please keep your comments to three minutes, and state your name and address for the record. Anybody like to address the board at this time? Hearing none. It's too cold for most, I would guess. We'll move on to standing committee reports. First standing committee report is the Planning and Zoning Committee, Chairman Camer.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, we have no reports on the Planning and Zoning Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Camer. Next item on the agenda is under the Building Committee, Chairman Martin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report at this time.
Thank you, Chairman Martin. Next item is Finance and Golf Committee, Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Ranky. Next item on the agenda is License and Ordinance Committee, Chairman Carbonaro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing further to report.
Thank you, Chairman Carbonaro. Your item was under the consent agenda. Next item on the agenda is Police and Health Committee, Chairman Shipman.
Not to report tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman Shipman. Finally, T L, can you hear us okay?
I can.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, Public Works Committee, Chairman Aaronz.
We save the best for last. We have two items under the Public Works Committee. The first one is the Metro Station License Agreement Coffee Vendor Space and Janitorial Services. We were approached by the vendor to trade our cleaning fee for their rent, but therefore they will be responsible for keeping the station as clean as it has been under the old agreement. So they will clean the station and keep it clean, and if it is not kept clean, we'll go back to the original agreement upon 48-hour notice. So at this time, I'll move to approve Resolution 2014-01.
01?
01. Hot sauce. Okay. Resolution 2014-01, a resolution approving the First Amendment to the non-exclusive license agreement between the Village of Bartlett and Robert and Carol's Bartlett Coffee Depot.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Aaronz, seconded by trustee Camer. Is there any discussion?
Do they get two strikes, three strikes before we go back, or how, and who's going to check up on them?
That's a good question.
Public Works watches those operations, and will just monitor as it goes along.
Are they doing that? I know it's the same place that takes over Hanover. Are they doing that in Hanover Station as well?
I'm sorry.
Are they cleaning the Hanover Station as well?
They do currently have the same agreement over in Hanover Park, and Hanover Park has been very pleased with their services.
Yeah, okay, good.
I think it's a great idea.
I think it's ironic that the very first thing that we approve is something to do with coffee of the new year, so that's always exciting. Is there any other discussion at this time? The clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee?
Yes.
Camer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Our second agenda item is the revised downtown traffic study professional service agreement. At our November 19th meeting, we asked the staff to expand the scope and decrease the cost of the proposed downtown traffic study, and this has been done with Christopher Burke Engineering. The cost has been reduced to $20,000, and with that, the village will do the traffic counts, et cetera. At this time, I would move to approve the revised professional services agreement for the downtown traffic assessment from Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited in the amount of $20,000.
Second.
It's moved by trustee Aaronz, seconded by trustee Martin. Is there any discussion?
The $5,000 reduction is good, but it's still $20,000 to do a traffic study that I don't know if we have the money to implement, even if the traffic study is concluded, and I don't know how much that's how significantly different the traffic study is going to be. I haven't heard a lot of late about the difficulty, or any difficulty, in getting through the downtown area. I would, I'm sorry, but I'm going to vote no, because I don't think we have the $20,000, number one, or we may, but I don't think we need to spend it right now. I would rather see us look at this again, maybe after we've discussed the study by the Economic Development Commission.
Thank you, trustee Aaronz. Anyone else have comments?
I've heard a number of residents complain about traffic in the downtown. I mean, and we've had people show up here to the meeting, so obviously, there's an issue. But just to clarify, the whole purpose of this study is to come up with ways to resolve or mitigate the traffic concerns we have in this area? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And we ask them to not just get a count, but also solutions with this, when we reduce the price, if I'm not mistaken.
I think that will be part of that.
Yeah, that's.
But the solutions to what?
The congestion, the people racing by. I mean, there's been a whole slew of people.
One of the concerns that I'm hearing, and this doesn't address your particular concerns, what this study will do, it will evaluate the current traffic conditions throughout the downtown area. It'll evaluate the traffic signals, it'll evaluate the movements, this one-way street that we have in town, the movements, again, with the traffic signals. We've asked them to expand it out further to encompass the North Avenue concerns that we have. Also, it will address the Western Avenue Railroad crossings also out there. To tell them what the concerns are, we're not telling them any concerns because I'm not comfortable, and I've not heard what the concerns are. People will, I have heard that people are concerned that it takes them a little bit longer to go through the downtown area. It's much safer going through the downtown area. If they're concerned about the speed of travel that they're moving through downtown, I don't believe that this study is going to address how to get through downtown quicker. It will evaluate the existing conditions that we have down there, and if there are any improvements to modify movements, then they'll address that on there. I can't come up and say what the solution is until they determine if there are any concerns of traffic movements.
So we're doing a study to discover what the concerns are.
They're going to do a study to evaluate the current movement conditions in the downtown area.
I have a couple of questions. This study will address the concerns, or will look into the concerns of the people who have complained about the traffic on North Avenue. Is that correct?
It has been expanded to address the North Avenue issue, yes.
Okay, because as we know by commentary here, we've had a number of people come to us specifically with those complaints. I believe that was part of what trustee Ranky was talking about. My next question, then, would be to Madam Administrator. Clearly, every year, we make a portion of the budget available for unplanned, yet kind of expected, expenses like this insofar as professional studies, professional services. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And would this fall within that budgetary area?
Yes, it would.
And is there enough money remaining in this year's budget to cover this?
Yes, there is.
Thank you.
Will they do it in the spring, or when snow's on the ground? Do we know?
We originally planned this in early, the first time it came in front of you was early November. We had set a 60-to-90 day. With the conditions that we have now, it would be very difficult to run traffic counts with the snow cover, ice cover. It'll probably be postponed until the weather, the roads are a lot better condition, and they can evaluate that with clean road conditions. So it's probably going to, they would be able to gather some of the data at this time, but it would be continued until later into the springtime.
Okay, because I don't want to waste our money, and I think we wouldn't get an accurate reading right now, personally.
Yeah, they would only be able to collect the data, get the information, accident investigations from the police department, paper data at this point.
And then, once we have this data, how would we proceed on it? I mean, they would make recommendations on how we proceed, or we would just say, okay, we got the data, and there's nothing we can do with it?
We had, when they
I didn't ask you, trustee Martin.
When they came back with the price, we had asked them, first of all
I think I was directing the question more to the administration, if I recall.
Well, I'm recalling the conversation we had. We asked them to
I'd be happy to hear what you have to say, Greg. Go ahead.
Well, we asked them to include recommendations. I mean, that was part of us approving it.
Thank you. Is that confirmed? Is that what you were going to say?
I think what they're going to do is look at the traffic flow in downtown Bartlett, and we have heard some concerns from that. I've heard some of the elected officials say that they have had some residents talk about some issues, and so we're going to take a look at them. In addition to the traffic flow, that ties in, again, to the light situation. Now, we've talked about the fact that, given the train station and the crossing, it's very difficult to do much with those lights. I don't think that isn't to say we can't look at it again. It's been several years since we took a look at that, and so I think when people complain about the flow through downtown Bartlett, a lot of it has to do with those lights, so we can take a look at that as well. In the meantime, we've had some folks on the outskirts of the downtown raise some traffic concerns, and we went to them and asked for that as well. Are they going to be able to come up with some magic wand full of solutions? No, I don't think that's likely to happen, but if there is some improvements to be had, I think that they will be able to identify that.
Because that's, being in the community, that's what I hear most of the complaints from people, is that I don't want to go through the downtown because I get stuck at the light, you know, and if we can't change that light, if there's nothing that we can do about it, then what would be the point of doing the study, is what I'm trying to get at?
Well, you know, we have always said with those items downtown, there really isn't much we can do, but what we did do is have Burke come in several years ago and look at the timing and look at the sensors, and we were able to improve it slightly. I don't think you don't ever want to look at those things again. I think, you know, maybe there is some improvement to be had, but I don't think that we're going to suddenly have flow through downtown that's going to be significantly different.
Okay. Do we have the ability to change the light if that was one of the recommendations, or is that a county thing?
The light is all underneath our jurisdiction. It's interconnected with the Metro, so it does, it's not the county, it is the village and Metro.
So just to recap, and trustee Aaronz, you're still there? I take it?
I am.
I think that this traffic study started out as a potential question for the Economic Development Commission, as part of what their global thought pattern was, and then it kind of morphed into some folks that were having some serious problems with traffic on North Avenue, both at Western and some other intersections, so we asked you to go back and try to see if you can include those. I have a tendency to agree that it's been done before. One of the questions that I would have is this study, would this study have any, be any benefit to avoiding the accident that could have potentially been a very lethal accident on Western? Is there any benefit be derived from a safety standpoint? I read that in here somewhere, where they would evaluate the safety of these intersections.
We have been asked by the ICC to look at that intersection, to see if there's any type of modifications down at the Western Avenue Railroad crossings, to make it a safer crossing. That would be part of this study also. Again, it would be a recommendation from the traffic study to see what could be done down there to make it any safer. I've not, you know, evaluated that or looked at if there is any possibility down there.
You should know that there's laws that are already violating ordinary day accidents, so
Okay.
And less to do with design, and more to do with traffic violations that are created by the president.
So I'm glad you spoke up, chief, because at the risk of being blunt, I would ask the chief and Hall, are we going to get anything out of this that we don't already know?
That's a great question. I can tell you have a vocal neighborhood up there right now, who's kind of along the Western Northern Corridor there, who has seen a significant change in the traffic patterns in their neighborhood. That used to be a quiet neighborhood. Now, it's a very busy street and intersection. And as a matter of fact, I had several in my office this afternoon, and we were brainstorming a little bit, and what they're seeing is that really what this is, is less to do maybe with the light downtown, and more to do with clientele being educated that you don't have to go 59 to 20, and then go through
It's the bypass.
traffic lights to get into Hanover Park. You can come down West Bartlett, avoid all the lights, and just hit two stop signs by going through their neighborhood. They're getting tremendous cut through traffic. And so they've asked us to look at that, and there's some things we can bring to your attention and see what you want to do with it in the future. There's always unintended consequences for shifting flows and traffic patterns that I think need to be thoroughly vetted, and this study may be one way of doing some of that vetting. That's part of the consideration, I guess.
So you're 50/50?
Oh, that's, yeah, I think I could use some of the information, but we could make moves without that information, so I think this is thoroughly a board decision.
Okay. Okay. Hall, any other comments?
Well, I think, you know, if we're moving it out and looking at Western Avenue, looking at the Western Avenue, North Avenue, I think we're moving so far away from the downtown studies, so I think there's a couple of different issues that you need to really address to look at if you want to look at a downtown study or you want to look at the other ones. They're both, yes, they're both intermingled in there, but I'd be cautious on how far apart they are. They are really a couple of separate, different issues in there. Western Avenue does concern. I've had some conversations right after the incidents with the ICC that does actually govern the railroad. They have talked about closing that crossing, obviously. We couldn't do that for our downtown. I think that would be devastating to close the road traffic around there. They're talking about additional stop signs out there, or free flow across the tracks. That would really change our traffic pattern on that, and that would be, you'd need to do a study strictly for that intersection alone when you start talking about that. So you have some bigger traffic issues there. You know, globally, we can look at this study through the downtown, look at the traffic study. I don't know if you'd get any good, or you'll get recommendations out of this, but I'd be concerned about the recommendations to make any vast improvement with the traffic signals. I don't believe that, going back to the traffic signals, are we looking at a recommendation to eliminate all the traffic signals? I don't believe that'll ever come out from any traffic engineer. It is a safe condition there. Modifications, could it be changed? Could it be tweaked a little bit, shorten some timeframes down? Could possibly be, but like I say, it's been a while since we've looked at that. So, you know, you're not going to be able to change what already exists, and modifying it, tweaking it a little bit, might be of the best interest.
I would guess that, you know, in my opinion, if it's a safety issue at North Avenue, and I don't know, I don't live at Western and North Avenue, there's benefit if it leads to an opportunity to avoid accidents down the road and keeps an intersection open that we can access in town. That would be my opinion, but any other discussion?
Does it make more sense to consider the review of Western in light of the ICC's request, and then vet the ideas along north, and then conduct the traffic study to fit those issues? So instead of conducting the study first, we're going to vet the possible solutions? Because it just seems like to me that the tail is wagging the dog.
They both are a little bit tied in with each other. Some of the traffic study and some of the information you'll receive from the Western Avenue, the North Avenue, will help with the downtown and vice versa. Again, you know, which one you do first, if you want to do it all-encompassing or isolate them down. You'll be able to use some of the data for one or the other. You could do just the Western and north, address that, come up with a proposal for that.
Would the information be useful for the CMAP grant process?
Yeah, I'm not sure if that would, any type of data that you would collect now would be helpful for any type of a grant that you would apply for. I'm not, you know, particular if it would be all available for that.
Hearing none? T L, any other questions?
No, thank you.
All right. Hearing none, we'll ask
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Oh, that concludes the police, I'm sorry, the Public Works Committee, and thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Aaron's. Next item on the agenda, Paul's under new business. There's already an item on there under Maxine's class V liquor license request. For our considerations for liquor license application submitted by Maxine's Brewster Creek LLC located at 801 South Illinois Route 59. The appropriate surety bond and certificate of insurance have been submitted by the applicant. They have been reviewed and approved by the village attorney. I've reviewed, it looks like all the information is inherent to be accurate. If there is no objections from the Board, I intend to issue this license as requested. Is there any other new business for the good of the order?
I'd like to ask staff, since I'm in the very early stages of budget proposal, considering the, the amount of, or the frequency with which we use the attending by webcam system, can we look at improving it and bring it into the 21st century a little bit?
We certainly can. We did, looked at estimates of that in the past, and it was pretty significant.
Yeah, I'm hoping technology has curved that a little bit, but...
But we could, we will be happy to look at that again.
If you bring one or two ideas to us and see if there's a way we can squeeze that in.
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
A little robot with a monitor with TL's face on it rolling around the front here would be good.
That's what we'll shoot for then.
Okay, good.
I always wanted the blow-up doll in my chair. I don't know. I did have one comment. I, it's been said so many times before, but it bears repeating, to Paul Kestner and his little snowbirds, that the plowing in the village has been magnificent, and a great job done, and, and, boy, a lot of sympathy for the guys that go out at 1:00 in the morning and do, you know, five or six hours of plowing, and they just, they just do a heck of a job. And please pass on these comments, Paul. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would reiterate that. Excellent work. This has been quite a storm, and two water main breaks, I think. That cannot be fun in 20 below weather. Those guys are true heroes. So, any other new business at this point?
How's our salt doing?
Doing fine. We have not even received any of our shipment for this current year. We're still working off of last year's stock, so we're just great with that.
Anything else? Hearing none, no one entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Shipman, seconded by Trustee Martin. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?